Excellent. All right. So I am going to ask for a roll call vote to start this meeting. Marissa?
Marissa Carr here.
Lori?
Lori Garcia here.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein here.
Shannon?
Shannon Gottem here.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle here.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt here.
And Cynthia Kuzinski here. Okay. We will start this meeting, this emergency meeting with a public speak. So we're going to ask that you limit yourself to three minutes, but if you would like to speak, please signal and I will, okay, let's start with Sarah and then we'll have Margaret so far. Go ahead, Sarah. Unmute. Thank you.
Um, this before, so we'll see how it goes. So my name's Sarah Gilio. I live at 103 East Street and I'm a parent of a current kindergartner. So I'd like to advocate for keeping things the way they currently are with the kindergarteners and the special populations, having the option of being in person in the high school building. Our child is in person right now and it's been an improvement for her and for our family from compared to when we were exclusively remote. Part of what has contributed to our family feeling that this was an acceptable risk to take was her being in the high school building. I do not support the proposal of moving all students back to the older school buildings, potentially in January. If that occurs, we're likely to pull our kindergartner from being in person and go back to being all remote. I'm having a hard time understanding how those two older school buildings are safe. And I don't see how it makes sense to push having the older students, like middle schoolers and high schoolers, back in person, which could push the younger students like mine into older, potentially unsafe buildings. And then having them to decide if they are going to go back to being remote. I think in this situation, we should be prioritizing the younger students and the special populations. And if there, if we, if the plan to move the students back to the old elementary school buildings continues, there needs to be very clear communication about what has changed in the old school buildings to ensure that they are, have safe ventilation and that, that it, so that before the parents are asked to decide that we are going to put our, if we're going to put our children back in those buildings or not, we need time to understand what is different. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret?
Hi, my name is Margaret Betts. I am a fourth grade teacher at Maple. And I would like to just be an advocate for the first grade coming into the high school. So I understand we're in an emergency meeting and it's very likely that this is about metrics and this is about what makes sense right now. So this might be moot, what I have to say, but the situation, if they go to the high school where they're the last grade to go and all other groups at the high school have an extra one or more dedicated people to that classroom. And I just want to put out there that I used to be a first grade teacher and the difference between teaching fourth and first could not be further from each other. I can imagine being in the classroom with students in fourth grade without a para, having them follow the rules, being able to help them. First graders are so close to kindergartners that I can't imagine it for kindergarten and I can't imagine it for first. And I know that, so Sarah Gallo just said that she's, that her kindergartner is really liking it and that it's good for their family the way it is. And I think that's because of the extra adult that's specifically assigned to the classroom. And I just want to say that if we could just make sure that there is another adult, not someone assigned specifically to children, but assigned to that teacher, to be the extra person to be able to work with the children who are online at the same time, make sure things run smoothly, I think we'll have success with the first grade. But if we put them back there in a, like, we hope to get in another adult maybe situation, I think we'll find, we'll have failure. And I, I've just been very pleased by people's feelings about how things have gone for their children and their experience at the high school, and I want the same for my colleagues in first grade. So I hope we can find a way that if this isn't moot, that we cannot create precedent tonight and we can just say that we can staff the first grade like kindergarten for the time being and we'll revisit it in January, because I understand things might change. But if we can just be really on the ground right now with who's going where, and it's only first grade coming back Thursday, if that's happening, I just really, I know in my heart of hearts that those first grade teachers will be successful if they have that additional support person. So thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else. Oh, Amanda?
Hello. I would also like to throw my opinion, I guess. I have a first grader, a four-year-old and a one-year-old, and I would also like to like beg you to please bring the first graders back. My first grader has been struggling tremendously and he is supposed to be starting hybrid next Monday and I hope he still does. And he is looking forward to it and he needs it and I need it. And I understand that you guys have your metrics, which I, I think it's a great idea, obviously need to have them. But I have, my four-year-old is in preschool and there's about 80 kids in the school and they've been open since June 29th with no problems. I feel comfortable sending my four-year-old and I feel comfortable sending my first grader. And I know there's a lot of parents who feel all kids should be remote, but all parents do have the option to keep their children remote if that's what they feel like doing. And I do still feel like we should still have the option to allow our children to go to hybrid if the metrics allow. Thank you.
Thank you. It says Matthew?
My name's Shashana. Hi. My husband is Matthew. Hi, my name is Shashana Worth. I am a parent of a kindergartner in the East Hampton School System. I want to, I think, echo what I'm hearing a lot from other folks of prioritizing the youngest children being in school. Our daughter is also in the hybrid model and, you know, the in-person interaction has been incredibly valuable for her, that, you know, the first elementary school experience for our children being totally remote, I think was quite challenging. And, and I worry about preserving the safety of that interaction, particularly kindergarten, potentially first grade, as, as we continue to expand and add more children to the school. I also, one, I've been really proud to be a parent of the East Hampton School System. I think that for the most part, the plans that you guys have developed and the work you've done has been incredible, particularly as I hear about what's happening in the other school systems. But I have huge concern about the safety of the, of going back to the other buildings, just as Sarah had said, and feel like communication about work that is being done to evaluate and update that has, has, you know, I think we got an announcement maybe over the summer and I haven't heard anything since. Doesn't seem like the, the resources and time to truly update the HVAC system in the way that's needed has likely occurred and maybe it has and we just don't know about it. But, you know, I really worry about a system that, that potentially pushes out the younger students for fear of safety. And I think similar to what maybe Meg had said about this could all be a moot point because numbers are continuing to rise in the state and safety continues to be a concern. You know, depending on what you all are going to talk about, that could change, but, you know, just would really implore you to think about those who need in person the most and ensuring that that can be preserved in a safe way.
Thank you. Anybody else? Melissa?
Hi, my name is Melissa. I am a parent of a kindergartner and a first grader. And I haven't been to one of these meetings before and it's somewhat strange to address a speculation, but I guess I'm speculating that you're here to reconsider whether or not first grade should have the hybrid return that has been planned. And I've not come to any of these meetings or spoken at them because we're keeping our children home and I recognize that many families don't have the option or desire for a variety of reasons. And I'm not saying that hybrid works well for my children. It doesn't. I think Zoom is completely developmentally inappropriate for my kindergartner and my first grader. But I'm here to say that I feel like our highest priority is to protect the health and safety of all. And I've been concerned since the beginning that it is an undue burden to place upon the adults who work in the school system to ask them to return under these circumstances. And now, as we're basically facing as a society, what I think is a comprehensive and sustained public health campaign to tell all people to stay home as cases rise and we enter what is arguably the worst phase of this pandemic. I'm here to say that I hope that you will prioritize care for the teachers amongst all the other priorities that you are weighing. And I feel that one significant teacher or any other adult who works in the school system, illness or is one too many. And so for that reason, I, I am not in favor of requiring anybody to return to work in the schools at this time. And I do understand that health and safety concerns mean that some children need to be supervised and I would encourage pursuit of alternative options that adults with lower risk to, who can choose to supervise remote learning and in-person settings for the children who really need to be in supervised setting where they can be assisted with their remote schooling. Thank you.
Shelby?
Hi, my name is Shelby LeBumbard. I have a 11th grade student at East Hampton High School. I'm also the administrative assistant at Center School. I wanted to speak for a minute on the side of the argument, so to speak, prioritizing all of the elementary kids in the high school and not returning them to their own buildings if it's deemed safe. My son is angry. My son is missing his friends. My son has a year and a half left of school. These are times he cannot get back. I just would like to also offer the perspective of these high school kids. He's actually been very hopeful to speak at one of these meetings and he's made a PowerPoint. He's done all kinds of stuff showing how Zoom is hard for high school kids too. Unfortunately, he works at Biggie's and he's always working on Tuesday nights, so he has not been able to attend one of these meetings and speak, and I would really, really like for him to be able to. But I just wanted to throw that perspective out there. It's not easy for the high school kids to learn on Zoom either. They're not made to sit in their bedrooms for six hours a day, any more than the younger kids are. But the younger kids have 12 more years to make up this time than the high school kids have, some of them not even a year left of high school. So I was just hoping that could be thought about as time goes on and if there's any way to get those high school kids back in school. I know my son would have felt really disappointed if I didn't speak up and say that for him.
Thank you. Linda B?
Sorry, I forgot to unmute. Yeah, I just want to go with what Shelby just spoke about because I too have a high school student who happens to be a senior. And I, I know we're trying to keep everybody safe, but it's really difficult when you do have these children who, this is it, this is her last year and it was difficult on the seniors last year. I know the second half of their senior year was remote and they didn't get their graduation the way they wanted. And I know that was really difficult. But the students, this year, the seniors are getting nothing. And I know parents, a lot of parents are afraid to send their kids back. They don't have to then. But there are a lot of parents out there that want their students back. And, and I feel bad for everybody. I understand everybody has an opinion. But, you know, in talking and saying, well, I want my kids to stay at the high school, even though it's not their school because it's safer. Well, then what are you going to say to the high school students who belong at that school, who should be at that school? It's, you just gotta please consider them in all this. It's not all about the youngest ones. We've got to look at all, including middle school. I mean, there's a lot of kids that just moved into a different school. They need to be there. They need to be learning. And it's just getting very frustrating for everybody. I know you're all trying, but I sometimes feel like you're not hearing the parents. And I'm putting my child's, my child's senior year in your hands. You're making the decisions what my daughter does. And I really want to have a little bit more say in what's going to happen. This is her last year. She needs to be in school. She needs, Williston's open. They seem to be doing okay. Those seniors are going to have a little laid up on the seniors at East Hampton High School who aren't there getting the good teaching that they can in person. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ben?
Hi, thank you. My name is Ben Hershey. I have a second grader at Maple. I just wanted to chime in and first, I think I wanted to second everything Melissa just said a few minutes ago. I think considering the well-being of as many people as possible, obviously everybody's doing that, but I'm really concerned that with the rising numbers, there's going to be, for me at least, even one case is too many. I mean, I'm in that frame of mind. So I would just very much like it if we could just continue to consider the possibility that remote is something that can continue to improve. I feel like at first it was very rough and complicated, but I think we have found a way to build something that's pretty stable. And I feel like our teachers are phenomenally gifted at adjusting and, and recognizing our kids, each kid's individual need and enrolling with that. And so it's, it seems important to respect that process. This is a historic nightmare and no one is happy and everyone is suffering and everybody's working incredibly hard. And so I guess I just, I want to put a lot of love, love out there to you guys because like superintendent, school committee, teachers, parents, students, everybody is struggling. So I don't know, safety first, I guess it comes down to in my, in my brain. And I hope everybody continues to stay safe and we could rally around families who are struggling the most. Maybe we can make space for those who need it the most. Sorry, we can make in-person space for those who need it the most and just keep working for the best of us, you know, the best situation we can. Thanks. Sorry for the ramble.
No, thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else? I'm going to scroll through. Jean?
Hi, thanks, everyone. My name's Jean Libby. My daughter is in first grade at Maple. I also want to echo what Melissa and Ben said and, you know, extend my heart and sympathies to like really everybody, especially parents right now. This is, it's so incredibly hard and there's really not the right choice. You know, we're a remote family. And so, you know, and a lot of times I have stepped aside to let folks share their points, but as a remote family, I, I'm concerned about my child's ability to participate in class for, if we are to move to hybrid, I think that it is a disturbance in, you know, what has kind of been set. I have described this year as kind of a fragile house of cards that currently is like kind of working. It's not great, you know? I don't love remote learning at all, but it's sort of working. And I'm really concerned that, I'm in my daughter's class, there's a large number of kids who want to go back and I totally hear that. But it's going to tear apart what little success we have had in sort of getting a routine. And I, I'm just worried about the disruption. Since the numbers are on the rise, it's, it seems like it might not be worth it to pursue adding first grade at this time if they're only going to be able to attend for a few more days or weeks, because no one's anticipating that the numbers are going to go down before the new year, unfortunately. So I don't, like, why are we pushing for students to go back into the classroom who aren't already there, just to continue to be interrupted again and again? So it's kind of a, a rough thing, but I would, I would suggest waiting to add first grade till, till we can see a leveling off or a drop down in the numbers. And it's just not the right time to be adding kids in if we're going to have to then go back to remote again. It's not worth the disruption. And I just also wanted to give a huge shout out to the first grade teaching staff at Maple and also at Center Pepin. I know it's been crazy and so difficult and our first grade experience has been at, at least sort of positive because of the teaching staff and, and solely because of the teaching staff. So I want to publicly say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Megan?
Hi, Megan Harvey. I have three kids in the system and I'm not sure if I'm supposed to chime in and mention anything now, or if you guys are going to loop me in in a little bit. But I just wanted to say, either way, during the public speak portion, that it is not lost on me that this is an extraordinarily difficult time. And it's also not lost on me that it's a time for public health folks and epidemiologists to be pretty unpopular. And I, I get that and I'm, I'm sorry for the recommendations that, in the data that I'm presenting that are showing increasing case numbers. I wish it wasn't that way. It brings me absolutely no pleasure and no joy. You know, I have a first grader and a third grader myself. I very acutely feel the struggles of remote learning. And we're all, and I realize that there are folks who are struggling even more than, than I with three kids at home. My job, as I see it, as someone in public health and with a degree in epidemiology, is to interpret the data that's coming out. I'm not an infectious disease expert. There are people who spend their entire day, every day immersed in COVID-19 learning. And that is not me. I'm looking at their research and interpreting it based on my knowledge of epidemiology. And I just, I just wanted their parents to, and the school committee members to know that. I would love for our children to be in school, learning in person as soon as that is safe. And so I'm here to answer questions, help interpret data as much as is needed and is helpful. And I, I appreciate the very difficult decisions the school committee members are making.
Thank you. Let me see if there's anybody else. Meg, are you giving just a thumbs up or did you want to talk? Okay, I'm assuming that's a thumbs up. Sometimes people use a thumbs up to actually try to participate. All right, it looks like going, going. Now we're never to raise your hand. I'm looking. Okay, I'm going to close public speak. So, um, I called this meeting out of concern after, I'm trying to give some historical data. We had a school committee meeting and when we looked at the metrics, when we were deciding where to go from here, we really had only one column, one part of virtual learning highlighted. And everything else was go for phased in and hybrid learning. And then on Friday of last week, the numbers changed dramatically. The metrics changed, the numbers across the state, the numbers locally changed quite dramatically. And suddenly we're, if you're looking at, and we can, I'd like to put up, is it possible to put Megan's metrics up that she sends us? Does anybody have it at the ready?
I can find it.
Yeah.
I have it. I can share.
So.
Someone needs to give sharing rights.
Yep, I just did. So what happened is, if we look at this, we're looking at last week before, before Tuesday, the columns, there was really only one in the virtual learning column. Everything else was hybrid and phased in. By Friday, we were up to, I have Fridays, which was the 13th. We had five highlighted in the column. We saw a dramatic rise. And on Friday, the number, Friday, the 13th, the number was 29.5, for instance, for cases per 100,000. And now it is up to 35. So what I was watching is these numbers and these columns dramatically change. And knowing that we have first grade scheduled to come in on Thursday, I asked that we have an emergency, put our heads together and decide what to do in terms of, do we hold on to, do we hold on to that thought or do we switch gears? So before we ask perhaps Megan questions, Dr. Leclerc, did you want to say anything?
Yes, please. Thank you. Can we just, can we stop the share? Because I can only see four people at a time.
Okay. And then we'll go back to that in a few, we'll go back to that in a few minutes.
See the whole, the whole picture. If I'm getting the evil eye or anything, I'd like to know. All right. Yes. So that's one data point that we're looking at. And Megan is gracious enough to send us that update weekly, usually on Mondays. I think it's, right, Megan? You send that on Mondays? So we are looking at that data over time. And in addition to that, from the union side, and I don't know if Nellie is here, our union president, she has a spreadsheet that she works on to provide me with input as to the numbers, particularly in the counties around us, Franklin, Hampshire and Hampden County. And then of course, I have my regular calls with our health agent, Bree. So there are a lot of data points that I'm looking at. And I think that if you listen to the comments from the people in public speak, there are a lot of different feelings that people are having about, should we be in school? Should we not be in school? And Megan says she's not popular. Well, I'm really not popular. Most is Megan. But here's what I feel. And I'm, I'm giving you my, this is my opinion. I am extremely frustrated by the increase in cases in our community and regionally and across the state. And, you know, I think that when we have children in school, I have said it before and I will say it again, I think we're doing all the right things. And I think school is a very safe place for our students and our staff because we're doing the right things. But if the community does not cooperate, then we have a problem. And right now, the community of East Hampton is not cooperating because there's a high number of cases. So if the community does not value our schools and getting our kids back in school, then we have a significant issue. So my recommendation, based on the data that we're seeing tonight, is this. I recommend that we push off starting grade one in person. And I know that people are not going to be happy about that, but I feel that the numbers are increasing and it's not the appropriate time to bring the students back. My recommendation is that we get another report from the COVID team in two weeks or so and we revisit the issue at the December 8th meeting and decide if we want to have the first graders come back sometime in mid-December. That, I'm not saying that they'll never come back. I'm just pushing it off a little bit. And this will either tell us whether the community can get this spread under control. And this will either tell us whether the community can get this spread under control or whether we have to, um, not in, not invest in our first graders and bringing them back in person for the time being. My recommendation further is, um, we have two programs that were delayed. Um, and we're set to start on Thursday. One is the DLC and one is the SOAR program. My recommendation would be to not begin those programs on Thursday and push those off as well to be reevaluated on December 8th. Again, parents have been waiting so patiently for those programs to start. But if it's not safe enough for the first graders to come in, then I don't think we should be adding other students. And finally, for the students that currently are at the high school, our special populations and our kindergarten students, um, I'm looking at the data, uh, from Megan. I'm looking at tonight's, uh, the last two nights' data from Nellie, our union president, and the numbers are continuing to climb. So I would say that we end our special populations preschool and kindergarten program at the end of this week. I don't think we can do it immediately with the snap of a finger. Families need to make arrangements for childcare. And I think, you know, we need to be fair about it. Today is Tuesday, um, and send those students home as well. Um, so that everyone goes into remote learning and we need to shut this down. And we need to get the message to the community that if we can't get this under control, we can't bring kids back. And I, um, you know, I know not, that not everyone participates in every school committee meeting, but I have advocated for bringing high school students back into the high school building. I truly believe they need to be there. And I really believe that the other students need to go back into their own buildings. And for the families that, you know, are not able to be on this call all the time because it's a lot of hours, I get that. We are doing things at our elementary schools and we will be putting out a report in the next couple of weeks that identifies all the engineering assessment that's been done and the steps that are being taken. So I agree with people that you need that information before you can make an informed decision. So that will be coming. So that's my recommendation right now. Postpone grade one, postpone DLC, postpone SOAR. Reevaluate at the December 8th meeting with a recommendation by the COVID team. Um, and, and the other in-person hybrid programs that are currently in place by the end of this week. And I'm not happy about it.
No, no, no. I wasn't happy calling this meeting. Um, so just a couple of things before we discuss that I want people to understand. Um, in terms of the buildings, uh, we, we will be getting a report of the work done of our buildings and be presenting it to the public. We are not using other buildings because they're not ready. And we're working diligently to, um, get them ready so that we can begin to use them. We would not just start using them without sending information out to parents, um, to let them know what's been done and publicly talk about, um, the health of the buildings and their safety factor. So, um, that is the holdup right now in terms of those buildings. And the priority for the, um, the elementary school kids, the lower kids, pre-K, K and 1, the initial thought is those are really crucial years. So that was the reason, I'm just reminding people of the history of this, these decisions. That was really because those are really crucial years for the building blocks of education. And, um, as a teacher myself, I can tell you those first few years, I do not teach elementary students. I teach high school, um, but they really are building blocks. And if you lose those, it's a, there's a difficulty. So that's why we prioritized. And of course, special populations, um, that's a mandate anyway from Desi, but we would do that in good conscience. So, that being said, Laurie, would you like to talk?
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. First, I would like to thank all the parents who have the courage to speak on Zoom. I know it can be a daunting experience for many people. We do listen to everything you say and we read everything you write. And our hearts break for all of your situations and I want you to know that. I applaud our superintendent for what she just stated tonight. I can tell you once again that I'm so fortunate to be able to work on the COVID response team with her, our other professionals, and most of all, Megan Harvey. She is the one that has taught me most about how to handle the situation as a school committee member in a community facing rising numbers. I believe her, I believe in her metrics, and I also believe her optimism. When she has told me, in fact, she told me again last night, Laurie, I believe we can bring our students back probably in February. Megan, nod your head if you said that last night. Okay, maybe not definite, but she has optimism. Okay, I, okay, I'm not gonna put you on the spot. She's optimistic. Why? We have to consider that first, there are very hopeful possibilities with the vaccine. We are also very hopeful that public schools will get the needed funding come the, uh, the inauguration of a president who believes that public schools need to be funded appropriately. I hear comments about private schools being able to conduct their classes. I know very well that they are able to because my husband teaches at one. But there are also problems there. They, uh, they have the resources to be able to test everyone every single week. Our mayor has said even our city is going to Williston to be tested on Wednesday because they can get faster results. Unfortunately, we do not have the capability to do that in our East Hampton public schools. If we did, if we could monitor the situation appropriately, if we could really know that our students are coming to school COVID-free, then we could bring back more populations quicker. But we can't because people are walking around asymptomatic. And not only do people walk around asymptomatic, even when people have symptoms, they are still going places. And that's what we are facing. And that's why our numbers go up, not only in this community, but in our Commonwealth, in the country and across the world right now. So we have to band together. As Megan said, we have to hunker down and wait till it is safe. And I really do listen and I know that juniors and seniors need to be in school. I know that kindergarteners and first graders need to be in school. I know that every student needs to be in school and every teacher needs to be in school teaching them. And we will do all possible to do that as safely and as quickly as possible. But please have trust in us that we are doing the right thing. And I thank you all for coming, for listening to us, for seeing these passionate speeches. But they come from my heart because I care about everyone. And thank you, Dr. Leclerc, because I'm gonna back your decision.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to say anything?
Um, I'd like to ask a quick point of clarification. Um, Dr. Leclerc, when you said, uh, you mentioned, um, revisiting the grades, uh, on the 8th, that we have scheduled to come in, I'm assuming, I'm just looking for clarification that we, the idea is to also revisit the students that are currently in the buildings that we would be stopping at the end of the week?
That is correct.
Marissa, Shannon, Mary, Mayor. Shannon?
I, I was just curious, have we had any positive tests in the school now?
Um, we have not had any transmission due to in-school participation. We have had people that have been, um, exposed to the virus through their spouses or family member, but not through any contact in school. In fact, Mr. Evans wanted me to tell all of you that we made it through the fall sports season, including volleyball, with no cases of COVID for any of our athletes. So he wanted you to know that.
Thank you.
Mary?
Um, uh, one, just a point of information. Both our health agent, Bree, and the chair of the local board of health are on the call and are happy to answer, uh, questions, uh, to the best of their ability. Um, two, um, I, and I've been wondering this for a while. Um, how, how do school districts define no transmission in school? I don't know who can answer that, but that mystifies me.
Yeah, I don't know the specific definition, but in general, it means that the virus, um, is not spread from someone in school to another person in school. Now, I'm not saying that schools don't have any transmission, but the purpose is to mitigate transmission in schools. And to date, we have had no transmission in our schools.
So if Megan and, uh, Bree, uh, if they're on, I think you could answer that, Megan. You had your hand up?
Yes, so I did want to address that, uh, briefly. To really understand if we have transmission occurring in school because children are more than likely going to be asymptomatic, it often is spread very silently in school buildings. Unless we have weekly surveillance testing of symptomatic and asymptomatic cases in an entire town, we cannot answer that question yet. And anybody who tells you that they can answer that question is just making educated guesses. Unfortunately, there's a very small sub-sample of places that can actually answer that question about whether or not transmission is happening in the schools. It requires really good contact tracing and surveillance testing.
Thank you, thank you, Megan. And I would just say to clarify, Megan, Megan is more the expert on that than I am. But I know for the, the cases that our nurses are following, those cases, they have contact traced and they know where the transmission was or they, they have, um, good data to support that. So, but, but Megan is right in her assessment, so I defer to her.
Mayor, you add your hand up again? Did you have another question?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was gonna speak to contact tracing and how, um, understaffed we are as a school district, as well as school department, as well as the city and surrounding cities. Um, so I think in theory, it's a great system, but it's, it's woefully underfunded and staffed. Um, additionally, I, I agree with Megan, um, or Meg about the silence trans, the silent transmission. Um, I will say that, um, as a former teacher and a school administrator, uh, yeah, kids in school is, it's extremely important for a whole bunch of different reasons. Um, and with the next, and, and as testing was just mentioned, um, you know, I think the next federal stimulus or the next or set of parameters by the Massachusetts Emergency, um, Agency as well as FEMA, um, you know, we need, if the state will not fund, uh, the city, um, really should, one, one of the investments we'll try to, try to do is, is pursue surveillance or even pool testing, um, for the schools, um, by, you know, carved out graves or, you know, I'll leave that up to the experts. I, I think that for me, um, that is pretty key for more kids to come back in the school. Um, I do struggle with the readiness of the four schools that, um, air quality and circulation were one of the many reasons why we're building a brand new school. Um, I cannot say in good faith, if I had an elementary child, which I know this is somewhat irrelevant, but I just want to be really clear, I wouldn't send my kid back to one of those schools right now. We don't know what really stops COVID-19 and it keeps changing. I, I just, I want to be very clear about that. Um, as well, I do think, and, and Dr. Leclerc and members of the school building committee, um, we are beginning to look at any expediting, um, opening of the new school that we possibly can do. And I will also be very clear that I will pursue any funds that can be reimbursed from, um, cares, but also pursue money in the existing bonding that can be reallocated towards opening that school, um, sooner. Um, the other thing I, I would say is, I would ask for is more coordination with, and a combined report that shares and, and reflects upon data points, not just from the school district, uh, the school department and what the, the COVID response team is doing and what, what Dr. Leclerc and her team are doing, but also with the city. Um, I, I think that we need to, to really take a wholesome look at, um, at what's happening in the whole community. It makes no sense to me across the country and across the state that as schools open and we see transmission rates go, go up, that schools aren't a part of this equation. The more we open our society, we are clearly seeing more community transmission. So contact tracing that is being done in the schools, when I compare it to what's being done in the city and the lack of pattern we have with contact tracing, not just in East Hampton, but also say in Pittsfield, where two high schools, very quickly, because contact tracing was lagged behind, had 104 confirmed positive cases between two schools. And, and so it's wonderful that we haven't had a case that we've noted about in EHS, but please, I don't let myself be fooled that it can't happen here. And people are COVID negative at the very exact moment they are tested and can literally walk out of that testing site and become infected. Or have a, a negative test and actually be carrying asymptomatic or be capable of asymptomatic spread as well. They might be in an incubation period of time where they are tested, they are negative, while the virus grows in their body and if they're tested four days later, they would be positive. There are just too many variables, um, even though, and I do, I, I, parents, I am, I hear you. I am listening. Um, I, I absolutely am, but I can't look at those numbers and feel great about, you know, of opening the schools. And when I look back at our last regular meeting and, um, the vote that we took that barely passed about bringing first graders back, um, that concerns me. I don't think we have the right data points in front of this committee, as well as city council, um, that we're making good decisions. And that scares the daylights out of me. And, and whatever support or, or the dat, and I don't know what changes to, to help us make those decisions um, better with more clarity, especially around our schoolchildren and our teachers and our admin staff. Um, but I, I think we need to, to look at that. Um, you know, and lastly, you know, I, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is incredibly disappointing. And I think their push and the push from our governor to open schools are driven by sets of data points and needs outside of the schools themselves. And I find that that is extremely disrespectful to the parents on this call because I believe that there are alternative funding mechanisms and programming we could be doing that's not remote for all of our children. And that is prohibited, um, you know, under the guidelines. It's very disappointing. We are not the only country that has faced this historically or right now about how to educate kids and do it outside the box and do it outside the classroom setup that we have now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, one of the changes I would like to see after watching everything shift so quickly is definitely have, um, our, uh, COVID team and, um, Bree, you know, I agree with the mayor, to have a consolidated look at the numbers each week and then have that information sent out to us. But again, I think these emergency meetings are just gonna happen intermittently because if the numbers start changing really, really quickly, we've got to react very quickly. Um, this is not fun. This is very disappointing. Um, a few weeks ago, I was really A few weeks ago, I was really excited, and I agree with Dr. Leclair. I was looking forward to first grade going in. That was a few weeks ago. And just about as soon as we started to approve a plan, the numbers started to grow, and then dramatically so. So it's really disheartening to, to see this happening. We did think they would go up in the, you know, as we started to close our doors and be inside, but this is pretty quick. And I'm hoping, I, I agree with Dr. Leclair. We, as a community, can change this. We can turn this around. But we all have to behave, and that is very hard. And I'm not seeing, and this is not just East Hampton. I'm not seeing it everywhere. We can't police people, they really have to do this. And if we want to get kids in school, we've all got to pull together and do what we need to do. So, Marin?
So, um, I guess the place that I want to start is, and clearly I will acknowledge that I think I'm in the minority here, but I think that what we have been discussing up to this point has been looking at the numbers and being very, you know, conservative overall, in terms of what we were going to be able to allow and agree to and move forward with. And certainly, looking at the numbers, there was a spike last Friday in our region. And again, from my perspective, I don't look at the state spikes. I want to look at what's happening in the Western Massachusetts region. And so there was very clearly a spike that happened on the Friday data. But overall, actually, since then, it's not going up. The numbers are not increasing from that spike. And they've actually dropped back down to the same level that they were the previous week before that. And if you'd like, I can share those numbers on the screen with the spreadsheet that we've developed with the union that shows that, those exact numbers and how they are, and how we weight them by county to the matrix that we had developed with the union about whether or not we were in school. So Madam Chair, if you'd like me to share that, I can share that on the screen?
Sure, you can. I'm seeing a difference from Hampshire County from 10.4 to 19.1, but sure.
So this is, this is the tracking of the daily count. You can see that each county has, comes down. This is the daily weighted average, and this is the weighted average. So what we had negotiated with the union was that it was going to be 1% from each of the other two counties and 8% from the Hampshire County. And so that becomes the, the daily weighted, but began against with a number of times. We've talked about wanting to make sure that it's looking at a trend, and so that we're looking at this number trending here. And so you can certainly see, I agree, very much so, and very concerningly, there was a spike on the 13th across a number largely in Hampshire, Hampden County. But those numbers to where we are now have already gone back down significantly. So I certainly, overall, agree that we are in that sort of edge area where we have to be very careful and be very much watching these numbers and tracking them. But these numbers show me a, show to me a spike that happened on one day, and that otherwise, we're in an area that we've been in for a number of weeks. And we've been having our students and our teachers in our schools safe with the special populations and K1, and K and pre-K and K. And so, to me, while it's something I definitely want to continue to track and watch, and I do not think that this means that we need to pull everyone out of school, and I think that that's a very unfortunate and potentially sort of reactionary decision, potentially, based on really what comes down to is one very large spike, and then overall, a trend that is concerning, but not to the place that where we've already negotiated with and agreed with across the union, across the administration, and where I felt like was really using science to make this decision. So I'll go ahead and stop sharing.
Well, before, before you start, start sharing, the rate of transmission, okay, the transmission rate that we are looking for is under 1.2. And it is, and has been consistently right now over that 1.2 area. So that is concerning. I do agree with you, we had a spike. That spike didn't, um, didn't stay necessarily. And we do have some numbers that we're working on with the union. My concern, and the reason for wanting to have this meeting, is not so much that we were going to pull the population that is in school right now, but my first question was really, do we hold on the first grade? So that, I see them as two different things that we will have to consider. And the first is that you have first grade slated to go Thursday. And yeah, you can, if, if no one else asks questions, we can stop that sharing. But we have people planning, kids planning and coming in on Thursday. And I see that as very problematic, number one, because if our numbers are going up all over the place, if you bring more people in and more kids in, you risk shutting everything down. So I see them as two votes. One is whether or not to put a stop on first grade. And so I think that should be a discussion. And the other, I would like to hear more from Dr. Leclair. What has made her go back to the idea of closing the rest down? I know there's a concern there, because I know in your heart, your push, my push, you know, i- is to get kids in. So what was the thinking? Could you tell us what you were thinking that when you made this recommendation tonight?
Yep, yep. So it's, and it, Thursday is the start of first grade, SOAR, and DLC. So let's just keep off, they're kind of a, you know, package deal. If we're not going to bring back first grade, we shouldn't bring back those other two programs either, because they would be starting. In reference to the programs that are there, you know, you're right. I, if, if I had my druthers, I would not be having this conversation with any of you right now, because I don't like this conversation. I, I spoke with my administrative team this afternoon, and their feeling is that if we are, if we, if you are saying that the school is not safe enough for first graders, then they feel the message is that it's also not safe enough for the other children that are there. To them, it's kind of a package deal. If we're welcoming students back in the doors, we should be equitable about, you know, either we're all in or we're all out. And so that is, that is the feeling from the administrators. And so that's why I made that recommendation this evening.
Maggie raised her hand. Maggie?
Hi, everybody. Sorry, I was late joining the meeting. So, so just as the Chair of the Board of Health, you know, these decisions are some of the most difficult that the municipality of East Hampton has to make because of everything that's been discussed over the last several minutes. But just in looking at the metrics that we have, the weekly report that comes out by each town and city, and just everything, we still have to look at the whole state. I understand that people focus on Western Mass, but we do have to look at the whole state. And there, we're in the middle of a surge, or not the middle, we're at the beginning of a surge. And my sort of daytime job, I'm involved with hospitals and nursing homes in this area, and they're starting to be out of control as they were last spring. So I know that those facilities, that population has nothing to do with our schools at this point, but, you know, I have one patient that was in, her whole family was positive. And it's, someone was saying earlier that the children are the silent transmitters, and that's definitely the case. We don't know, yes, the contact tracing up to date has been clean, but you can't predict that that's what's going to continue to happen as more and more adults are becoming COVID positive. Maybe it's not initially transmitted by the children, but the children could be positive and bring it to school. So I, I just feel that in order to keep people healthy, safe, and alive, we need to be really cautious and maybe reactionary, because we don't have any other science to go with right now. A vaccine is not going to be available to the general public for months and months. So we can't wait for something worse to happen. So I really, I agree with the opinion that we should not send any, any of our children back to school now, because there's so much that we cannot predict with this virus. There are so many manifestations of it that sometimes people are sick and they don't know that it's COVID, because it's not necessarily a respiratory thing. So that, you know, as a healthcare professional and the Chair of the Board of Health of East Hampton, I really can't agree with children returning to school at this point in time.
Thank you, Maggie. That's, that's helpful and very informative. Lori?
Thank you so much for that. I'd also like to ask Megan to respond to the metrics that Marin had put up and, and what she saw there. I think it could be helpful from an epidemiological standpoint.
Sure. I have a couple of things to say, so I will work my way over to that, if that's okay. A couple of points, I've been writing down some things that I wanted to make sure that I got out, so that we are all on the same page. We've talked a lot about kids not getting as sick from this particular disease. And we do know that's true, but we do not know anything about the long-term consequences in children or in adults. So I was afraid that I gave the impression that because children are asymptomatic and silent spreaders, that we don't have to worry about them doing that. I think it's way too soon for us to say that we don't have to worry about silent spreading and asymptomatic cases. Certainly, we have to worry a lot about symptomatic cases. This is a huge burden on our healthcare professionals. They're setting up field hospitals in Worcester. I mean, this is absolutely the start of a surge. And unless there's a reason to believe that these metrics will change in some way because of some behavior change or regulation that's coming down the pipe, which there are not, right? There, we know that things are on the, the opening trajectory, and those seem to not be rolling back. We see from the state that schools are being encouraged to open. There's no reason to think that one bump on one day, on a Friday, wouldn't keep heading that direction. It's always going to be kind of up and down, up and down, up and down. But you look at, over the past several weeks, what direction are we heading? And we are heading, over the past three months, clearly in a direction of an increased number of cases. It's happening in East Hampton, it's happening in Western Massachusetts, it's happening in Massachusetts. And if you zoom out, it's happening everywhere in the country and in the world. This is like a clear trajectory. The other thing I wanted to say about testing and contact tracing is that even on the best, in the best scenario, when we test on the exact right day, there's still up to a 20% chance of a false negative. So even when we do good testing in the model that we have now, it's still not that great. Surveillance testing is much better, because when you repeatedly test, you get a much better idea of what's happening over time. And that's one of the things, you know, we talk a lot about, like, what could possibly be changing in the next couple of months that would make this any different? And I would love to say the vaccine's coming, and we're all going to be saved by it. And the vaccine is coming, and we have really promising results. But I think the more immediate effect that we will feel is a pouring of money into understanding testing and developing rapid testing and getting rapid testing to people. We don't have a pandemic if we can test everybody a couple of times a week. We can control this, and we can send our highest-risk kids back into school, and then everybody back into school, if we have the testing capabilities to do that. So that I do really think is coming. And yes, I just wanted to emphasize the point that, you know, our healthcare providers are already struggling again. And we know that mortality, you know, people getting really sick and having to go to the hospital, and then, God, you know, hopefully they don't, but the associated increase in death rates, that takes a long time in this particular disease to see. So what has happened so far in this case rate? We are not even close to seeing the impact on hospitals. We are talking about late December, January increases in the number of people who are in ICU beds, on ventilators, and then January deaths. And then, if we don't turn things around and the numbers keep going up, we're looking at that building up from there. So it requires this kind of eye towards what's coming, not a hyper-focus on like what a couple of days mean. I think I said all the ones I wrote down.
Thank you. Mayor?
I would just like to go back to the administrators feeling all or nothing. I think that flies in the face of why we brought children back to the high school in the first place, and why we're considering so seriously not bringing back more students. We know, and the state has clear guidelines, right? They, we just ruled it back in the city. We went from groups of 25 and 50 indoors and out to 10 and 25. So an idea of all or nothing doesn't really make sense to me. If we can bring smaller groups of children in with proper cleaning in between, then I think something is better than non-nothing or, or all, or a black and white choice. And I also think that we're spending a lot of time on these metrics, the data points, treatment, testing, there are just so many variables. How can we, and, and, you know, our administrators and teachers, staff, the folks on the COVID response team in our city, how can we pivot, right? So the, the time that we're spending on recreating as close as possible the classrooms we knew, perhaps we should broaden that thought and step out of the box. And, and when private schools and daycares, you know, when we talk about the low incident there, they've rethought, you know, what space they can use and how they use space. And, and so you've got the private schools, the private independent schools like Williston, who have the ability to rapid test at least once a week, if not more. And, and that helps, but they're also using every space on their campus to educate these kids, including some remote, like spaces in their, in their physical education building that, you know, you wouldn't think is a classroom. When I meet about once every six months with the daycare providers in Western Mass, including some in East Hampton, and I don't understand why they don't have cases. There are very few cases, if at all. Is one, they've just gotten better and better around breaking out functions in a daycare and setting aside typical practices. Lots of outdoor stuff, independent learning centers where the mask breaks can happen. Parents don't come into the school at all if you don't work there, and if you're not a type... You know, I could go, you know, I don't know if any of those providers are on this call or not. And, and I had mentioned before, EEC, Early Ed, put forward a report and strong suggestions on August 28th, with the blessing of Desi, to take a look at those best practices on that level and see what we could do in creative spaces, either in our school or our community. And I understand that there was a lot of pushback around that, around privatization of education, and that's not at all. I think we really need to look at the educational settings that we're, that are really doing a great job and pull from that as much as we can. The same with parochial schools. There was just an article in the newspaper, and one of the biggest reasons why the parochial schools are doing such a great job is that at, you know, over the, the last, let's say, 10 years, their enrollment has gone down significantly. And they have extra space to break people up. up. And so when we see our public school students going there, it's for that reason, but also the parochial schools, for a variety of reasons, can limit the, their attendance, right? So, you know, they're going to make sure they have no more than eight children in any given classroom and, and space out eating or whatnot. We don't have that space ability. I think, you know, I don't want to get too far ahead of this vote, but, you know, we've done for older kids, you know, where we're building other schools, double sessions. You know, and, and I, I hear, you know, ideas, you know, throwing spaghetti at, at the wall right now, I think is entirely appropriate to see how we can get the creative juices in our community going within our education community. We have to do that. We, we owe it to the children. But when we're looking at how, how education is now and what we're trying to recreate with the extreme conditions of a pandemic, we are sure to fail. And that way, I also think that we're failing, you know, our students of all grades. Thank you.
So I know we spoke before about there were five students in the SOR program. How many students are in the DLC program?
I think Sarah might be on this call. I was going to say, I think there's four. And the DLC program was in session, and because of a staffing issue, it closed for two weeks. So it's set to reopen this Thursday, but it was already in session.
Okay. And how many first graders are we talking about bringing back?
I think it was 40-something.
So is that four classrooms?
No, that's spread out over six.
Six, oh, okay.
Yes. The numbers are, are small in each classroom. I think one classroom only has four students returning. I actually, I have the specifics. The other, the other piece I would say, in response to someone's comment or question around the other grades and why I'm discussing them, for the school committee members that are on the negotiation team, we do have a working agreement with the teachers' union around a metric that Maren showed all of you, and we're getting close to that metric, that, that threat, that number. And so Maren pointed that out. I don't anticipate, we're not there today, we may not be there tomorrow, but in my suggestion that we plan to close down the special pops pre-K and K, it was thinking that we would probably be at that metric by Friday. If not Friday, then probably next week. If numbers continue to incrementally go up, and I would rather parents are prepared for that than them having a surprise. So I just want to make sure that we're giving parents enough time in making this decision so that these are young little children that, you know, they need to plan for childcare situations and so on. So unless something significant changes, and I would defer to my counterparts on the negotiations team, we're getting close to that metric. So I'm just trying to forecast forward a little bit, but I, I would love it if I'm wrong. So if someone wants to disagree with me, I'd love that.
But the other thing about that metric that we're coming up with, that, that is one piece of the puzzle when you're looking at whether or not to stay open or to close. There are so many factors. There's rate of transmission, you know, there's what's going on in the counties around you. I mean, it's not just one number. We really have to look at trends. And so I think that what we've been doing for safety is try to have a number in our heads, but also continue to look at these beautiful metrics that I don't like when they, she highlights them. Makes me very sad. But we've got to look at a lot of different factors, and I think the good thing that we've been doing is taking all those factors, you know, hospital capacity, everything into consideration as we make these decisions. I'm really disappointed in, in what I'm worried that we have to do, but I, I do think that for my sense, you know, I'm, I'm even frightened as to what's going to happen after Thanksgiving. My hope is that December 10th, things look a lot better. But I hate to say it, I have this belief that we have to get through the holidays, that we're going to see an impact with the holidays. So we have the mayor and we have Megan. Mayor? You're on mute. You're on mute.
So I just, and, and I, I just not sure what the negotiate, the, the process is. So the, the agreement with the teachers around metrics, are they being reviewed by the COVID School Response Team or the local Board of Health or the, the state on our side? You know, usually we are costing out labor contracts, but given what we're negotiating, I'm wondering who, who is the scientific experts or set of experts that are looking at those metrics and seeing if they make sense for the district and, and honestly, what the policy of the city is and even the discussion of, of this committee. I would, I would just hate to end up with parallel numbers or, or numbers that, that cross each other and, and that the numbers are apples to apples to apples.
Lori?
Megan, our epidemiologist on that team, has asked to see those, and Dr. LeClaire was going to get permission from the negotiating team to share them. Did that happen, Megan? Have you seen that before? Because this was requested over a week ago, because we realize the importance of being on the same page when we're talking about metrics. Thank you, ma'am.
I'll share them right now.
The other thing that I wanted to say about the holidays, in this case, Cynthia, you don't have to just rely on feelings. We have really good evidence that after every holiday that has happened so far in the pandemic in every location that has had a holiday, there was a corresponding spike in the number of cases after a place celebrates a holiday that is, exists about three weeks after that holiday happens. So we will not know on December 8th what the results of Thanksgiving were. We will not know on January 4th what the results of the various December holidays were. We will not know until something like January 21st how bad transmission spiked during the holidays. And I realize it's just, it sounds like I'm just keeping, like, saying there's a date further out there, a date further out there, but we know that it takes at least three weeks to understand the effects of a particular super-spreader event.
Yeah. No, I agree. It's, I wish I didn't.
I, I don't think anyone addressed the mayor's question, so I just want to circle back to the mayor's question and let her know that we are still in negotiations with the teachers' union. So that is yet to be determined, but those metrics are what we are looking at with the COVID response team. We have a meeting tomorrow planned, and Megan is a member of that committee, as is the union president, as is Bree, the city health person, and our nurses, and Sarah. So we will be working on that, but what you're asking, Mayor, has not been finalized yet. I am just trying to juggle a few balls in, in looking at the metrics. I will tell you that the number that our side proposed was based on the global pandemic web, website from the Harvard Public School of Health, and it was based on those metrics. So that's, we tried to lodge our number in a known health metric that made sense to all of us, and so that's the proposal that we put forward.
Good. And Lori Garcia is on that team also, so.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry.
So we've heard from Maggie, we've heard from Megan, you know, we've heard from Dr. LeClaire. I, I, Maren?
Thank you. I just would actually like you to clarify one thing you said. So you had mentioned that you did not think it was a time to expand, but as the Chair of the Board of the Health, is this, is you saying that it's also something that you think we should be moving back from our current stance with the, what is it, 80 or, or, no, it's like 60, 70-something-odd students that are currently in small groups at our high school, special populations? Is that what you were saying, to step back from or just not to expand? If you could just clarify your point, I'd appreciate that.
I mean, I would say to step back because just based on what Megan has said and metrics that we have and where we are in our city, in the state, in the country, it, it just doesn't make sense to have students in a group in school. And I personally would recommend as the Chair that you step back because I feel that, once again, there are so many unknowns about this virus, and there, we just, why take the chance? I mean, I understand that education and childhood development and all of those things are so important, but it won't matter if we have a huge outbreak of COVID because kids are in school.
You know, we've all been looking at this since like March 13th, and I have to say, I really value Maggie's and Megan's observations and their thoughts because they know a lot more. Even though we've all been studying this, they know a lot more than we do about this. So I'm always looking for guidance, and I think that, that what they're saying is very measured and, and thoughtful. And I thank you both for your comments tonight. So Dr. LeClaire has made a recommendation, and that is that we push back for two weeks at least, and maybe look at these numbers again December 10th at our next meeting, but that we hold back on bringing the first grade in, not adding any extra, and that at the end of this week, we actually push back for the people who, the kids who are in the building right now. And we've heard from Megan and from Maggie that they believe that that's the wisest decision for us, and that means a lot to me. Again, I was just alarmed to watch the trends that I've seen and knew that if I brought us all together, we'd hopefully make the best decision possible. So is there any more discussion or is there anyone ready to make a? Shannon?
I just wanted to ask my question. I mean, does it make sense to wait until the Thanksgiving long weekend, like, to give people a little bit more time to make adjustments to their current situation if needed?
So you're thinking of the kids that are already in the building, can we afford to wait until the Wednesday before Thanksgiving? Is that your question?
Yes, which is next week.
Dr. LeClaire, Maggie, Megan?
I think it's a reasonable, I think it's a reasonable judgment to make. I think either this Friday or I would say, we usually have a Wednesday off before Thanksgiving, I believe.
It's really only two days.
It would be two days next week, so if you want to round it out till then, Shannon, I think that's, that would be one week from today.
I mean, I don't want to see them get pulled either.
No, I don't either. You know, believe me, you know, what, I appreciate, you know, everyone's comments tonight about COVID, and as serious as I take COVID, I also take the mental health and well-being of our students very seriously, and I feel like I am, you're asking me to make two very difficult choices, either COVID or I, I feel that I'm significantly jeopardizing the mental health of many students. And so I don't take any of these decisions lightly, and I read all kinds of data on mental health, and I can appreciate the people that have COVID as their lens, but I have a lot of other things that I have to think about as well. So, yeah, it's a struggle for me either way, Shannon, so I think that this committee needs to decide how they want to proceed, but from my perspective, I think that's, that's graciously giving people, parents, more time.
Maggie, Megan, is there, are we okay with Monday, Tuesday?
That's what I wanted to hear from. Lori? I wanted to hear from Megan and Maggie from a public health standpoint, thinking about families getting together on Thanksgiving, thinking about the number of days for transmission and for symptoms, and what would be the healthiest from, from the public health standpoint.
Go ahead, Megan.
Maggie, I'm looking at you. You want to take this one? The unpopular public health opinion is that today's action is safer than tomorrow's action, and Friday's action is safer than Monday's action. And I, I absolutely understand what Dr. LeClaire is saying, and I get it, I'm only here from the science part of it, of epidemiology and public health. That's why I'm not the person making the decision. Thank goodness, this is so challenging and heartbreaking. I mean, as, as a professional and personally, I would love for my kids to go back to school, but it just, yes, the public health perspective is that today's action is safer, you know, if it, if it happens today than tomorrow. Maggie, would you?
I would agree with that.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, by Friday, our numbers could be, could be really terrible, you know? Mayor?
I, I'm just looking to reframe this a little bit. So while I appreciate the mental health effects on parents and families and, and just, I mean, even members of this community, and while it may sound dramatic, I would rather have the opportunity to address the mental health issues and be creative than lose that opportunity because somebody has died or they're traumatized by somebody who has died and we can't really trace the, the transmission, or there is neurological after-effects of transmission that we don't know yet. I don't see this decision as a balance. I see it, public health is first and foremost, and we understand that there are consequences throughout our community and especially for children and for families. Rather than think about taking away somebody's senior year or their first experience in first grade, I see it that we're preserving their, their health and trying the best we can with no guarantee to make sure that they make their first year after high school or, or, you know, second grade. And, and, you know, to, to kind of throw the curveball here, I, I think that we would be remiss in not thinking because of this year and so many variables that the children who are in first grade, who would go to second grade next year, may be walking into school as first graders. I mean, I, I, I just think that, you know, I, I can't, you know, stress that enough. There are a lot of decisions, they're all difficult, but the bottom line is, this is not a choice between opening schools and public health and public safety. Public safety trumps. It does, in my mind. And, and, and I would say that those who have the perspective of just COVID-19, it's the only perspective we all should have.
It's 7:30.
From my perspective, also about the, the, when to close with everybody else, I'm more comfortable myself with Friday versus a whole lot of danger can happen after Friday. Friday gives families three days to, to make some, three days plus a weekend to make some arrangements and to adjust to that. So I personally am more comfortable with, with Friday as the last day for a little while. Mayor?
I, I'm sorry, I meant to bring this up again. I, I just, I feel again, I just, I feel again, like if there's a confusion or whatnot and, and I was, you know, to think about giving parents time and then Meg Harvey's comments about the action today, I just. We are talking, and I understand there's a practicality to this, but, but if public safety and public health is first and, and knowing the extreme circumstances families are in and children are in, kids going in from what we've heard from scientists, epidemiologists, that kids in buildings, staff in buildings right now is a very bad idea. And what will two days if the wrong thing happens? I am, I am personally, and will guide my vote, that in, in six months, when not one of our students has contracted COVID-19 and their families haven't, and we have no more cases in East Hampton, we have done the right thing today. We will not be able to look back on today and then say, oh, we shouldn't, we should have brought back the first graders or we should have allowed. We're just not going to know. So I'd rather like button it all down and just say in six months, if people are, are permanently impaired by this disease or have suffered losses or God forbid, have died themselves. I want to know that I did everything possible as somebody who's a decision maker to prevent that, even though it's really extreme. This is really extreme. Today, we broke a record of the most COVID cases since April 17. And then if you add on top of that, the numbers of when, when you have a case, who might not be diagnosed or we can't contact trace fast enough. If I sound dramatic, I'm fine sounding dramatic.
No, you sound good.
So.
It makes sense. Marissa?
I think I would just add, you know, I guess I should start with saying that I'm, I'm grateful for the leadership here tonight. And, you know, I believe it's appropriate for me to defer to the wisdom of the Board on Health, the COVID Response Team, the administrators in the building. In thinking about, you know, is it Friday? I'm not sure if the mayor is saying we should shut it down today or next Tuesday. I do think it's important to acknowledge that for a lot of parents, if their kids aren't in school, it doesn't mean that they're at home. You know, if we say you can't come to school tomorrow, it doesn't mean that that child then is removed from any risk of exposure to COVID. A lot of parents are then going to have to turn to babysitters, daycare centers, grandparents who then are perhaps getting to expose to a child who has previously been in a school structure. So I think that just needs to be factored in that it's not like schools are open and that's a public health risk and then schools are closed and those children are protected from any exposure in the future. A lot of working parents are having to send their kids somewhere.
Great point, Marissa. Understood. I, very well heard by me. Thank you.
So from my perspective, I would say, I, I feel the most confident with making, going forward with Dr. Leclerc's original idea. Hold on first grade and then Friday, pull back everybody else. Is there any more discussion? Does someone want to make a motion? Are we ready? I know this is agonizing.
I would like to make a motion to follow Dr. Leclerc's sage advice and pull back on starting the other programs and, and ending pulling out the students Friday. Did I say it right?
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
In terms of discussion, assuming that would follow.
Yes.
I just have sort of one thing sort of still rattling around my mind. One thing I've tried to kind of keep coming back to is the importance of consistency. And I guess the, the thing I'm still uncertain about is sort of this idea of pulling the kindergartners just to sort of reassess in a few weeks. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do that. I'm just feel, you know, as it's a topic that I've kind of continued to try to bring up, that I think I would be remiss to try to send them right back at that point. And I feel like in some ways, we're kind of making this decision and kind of kicking the can down the road with the expectation, though, that things are probably not going to look better at that particular point in time. And I guess I just want to sort of put that out there in terms of, you know, not getting, in, in terms of the way that we're sort of framing this to, to people and parents in terms of their planning. Yes, we'll revisit this. But I have a lot of skepticism about whether or not that would be a good decision at that time.
So I think what you're just trying to do is clear up. And if I misled anybody, I wasn't saying that on December 10th, we're going to vote that everything's perfect and we go right back. That, but that we're going to continue to look at this and the next time we would be looking at this trend is December 10th. Is that what you were trying to say?
Yeah, I guess. And it's not, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of the motion on the table. And I'm not trying to hold things up necessarily. I'm just skeptical that it would be the best decision to pull them, to send them back in a little while. And I'm just throwing it out there because I hadn't said it previously.
Lori?
I would like to say that that date was not part of my motion. I also never wanted to consider bringing the first graders back before Thanksgiving. So I, I don't want to put a date that the motion was pulling out the kids this week and not bringing in new students. And I am not making a motion to entertain it in December.
Correct. Maren?
I just put, as a point of clarification, our next meeting is December 8th, not.
Oh, sorry. I don't know where I got that.
It's in three weeks. So just to clarify, since that date keeps being said, I just want to be clear, it's December 8th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You should have shushed me earlier. Just jump right in and tell me I, I did it wrong. Thank you. Shannon, you had something else to say?
Well, no, I was just, you know, I'm, I've listened to what everybody has said and I appreciate all of the information that you guys have given us. My hesitation is if we say pull them out Friday, what I'm hearing is they're not going to be going back till late January. And that, it just, oh God, it kills me. It kills me. But it, it's just, I, I really think that that's what we're hearing today is if we pull them out Friday, which is why I was trying to give them a couple more days, you know, that it's, it, nothing's going to go back until after we have the effects of Christmas and the holidays. I just want to make my hesitation clear.
Maren?
Yeah, I mean, I really appreciate everyone's, the, the data points, everyone's opinions, everyone with us, you know, the experts in their field speaking up. I do think that it's unfortunate that these, this has been put together as a single proposal because I actually think that your original idea of splitting into the two separate proposals so that we could look at whether or not we want to expand separately from how we wanted to be able to pull back our current populations. I think it would have been, from in my mind, I was already clear how I would have voted if they were two separate things. And now I'm less clear because we're, we're lumping it all together. And I, I personally think that that's unfortunate. I think I would much rather have taken those two pieces separately, looked at whether or not we want to expand first grade and expand, or whether or not we wanted to just hold, hold steady with where we are. And now we're just considering actually just pulling everything back. And as Shannon just said, this isn't till December. This is until end of January at this point before we'll even be looking, we'll have any real sense of the matrix or numbers or any trends. It means not a single one of our students is in school until February 1st at best. And I think looking across the region with the students in other school districts in our area, we all have to make our own decisions. But I think that that's, to me, that's a different decision than whether or not we bring a first grade in. So I feel very, I feel it's, it's an unfortunate decision that we've now put them all, lumped it all together.
Dr. Leclerc?
I was remiss in not asking or telling you about one other group that I will put out there now and you can decide if you'd like to amend anything or address this afterwards. But regarding special education, we are currently evaluating students for OT and PT in school. And so if we are conceiving of shutting down again and going all remote, I am assuming that we are also going to not do evaluations in person. I want to be clear because I know there may be parents on this call that are looking for that clarification and I want to put that in your, in your thinking as well.
That would put those on hold, yeah. So should we go ahead with the motion that Lori made and Jonathan seconded?
Well, I. I guess, as I just stated, I think it's already very difficult for me to feel like we should be pulling students who need, have those special needs out of school entirely. But for us not to be able to do evaluation seems like a whole nother level of unacceptableness. That just seems to me like we are stepping back from our responsibility as a school district for our students. That, that seems too far. And I would certainly ask that at bare minimum, we put an amendment that we can still do evaluations for students, for parents and those students who are looking to figure out whether or not they need special services and we won't even evaluate them? That seems too far. So, you know, maybe, again, I don't agree with the thing that we're not, we're going to be pulling our special populations out of in person. But for us not to be able to do evaluation seems taking this way too far.
Just to clarify, we would be able to continue to do evaluations, but remotely. So it wouldn't be that evaluations would stop. Just wanted to clarify that.
Right. Mayor?
Yeah, I, I agree with Maren about evaluations. I mean, I, I think about evaluations as really a therapeutic service and, and in person is important. I mean, maybe some, I, I'm not up on the current valuations, but I, I do think that there's, you know, people see doctors in person, right? People who have broken a, a foot or something like that are going to OTs and PTs. And, and I think that there is a way, a continual way to do that for students to give parents, you know, an idea of how they can support their child as well as make any, you know, for any remote or different type of learning to, to, you know, figure out modifications. So I, I don't get the leap to no evaluations in person. I think they're like medical appointments, you know, so, and, and this, you know, the one-on-one services. I, I don't, I do have a slight concern and this is a little, I, I say it out loud, but I'm not sure really what the implication is or not. I also worry about not doing that, those in-person evaluations or one-on-one services. I, I would be concerned about ADA and IDEA violations on a civil rights level with the ADA and violations of the federal and state Individual Disability Education Act. I'm not sure that's true, but I, I just, that's what kind of popped up, especially since I think we have a safe way to do evaluations and one-on-one services for children.
Megan, you had your hand up for a minute?
I think it was me.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Maggie. Sorry. I'm looking at you and saying the wrong name.
So I just, you know, I agree with the mayor and it's kind of back to what has been said. It's thinking outside the box for these kinds of situations when you have to do evaluations. You know, physicians are doing telehealth, you know, physical exams or sick telehealth visits, you know, visiting nurses are still going into people's homes with the correct equipment. There are a lot of different ways that you still can conduct those kinds of evaluations, making, you know, an appointment and having it in one site at, you know, office in the school or something like that. I'm not sure what those evaluations entail. I'm a geriatric health professional, but you know, this is where, where you have to meet those high-risk people. You have to really get creative on how you can do those kinds of functions. And it's, they're done all over the world in the adult world. So there's ways to adapt that kind of thing.
Lori? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I don't think that that was part of the motion. I may not have said it as eloquently as my colleague Jonathan Schmidt would have said, but I said nothing about testing. And I think we were testing students before we brought in any populations. So how did they just get lumped in with that motion?
I asked for clarification, Lori.
Oh, okay.
And I said that it could either be amended in your motion or it could be addressed after. And then it.
Okay.
Then the discussion continued.
Okay. Because I hold my motion.
Shannon?
I feel like I need to, I'm going to go with Maren on this one and I think we need to separate it in regards to the students that are currently in the building and receiving services and also bringing in new students. Maren, that's what I was trying to make. And I have to agree.
If Lori and Jonathan do not mind, I don't mind separating the two. I'm not sure it's going to change the vote. But I don't mind. What do you think, Jonathan and Lori, about doing two?
I'm comfortable rescinding my second. I did like that idea from, you know, back in the beginning of this conversation and.
Separating two votes.
Lost track of that, but yeah, that's fine with me.
So there would.
Lori? I agree. The reason that I abstained last week is because I didn't like clumping everyone in together. That's why I abstained, so.
Can I ask, can I ask another quick question of folks?
Yes.
Because obviously we sort of made the decision to include kindergartners as a part of the special populations and that wasn't necessarily originally a part of sort of the directive around bringing those groups of students in. And obviously, when we're dealing with just the special populations, students, and we remove kindergartners from the equation, it's a much, much smaller group. And I do just sort of wonder some folks' thoughts on if we kind of, of course sympathetic to the, you know, intense learning needs of kindergartners and the special needs that they do have, if we were to sort of remove those folks and just consider keeping in the special populations based off of the definitions at the state level, then I'm curious what folks' thoughts on that would be.
Well, I've, I've listened to you guys say that, you know, what we're doing, we're doing it well and people have been safe. And so, I mean, we put the kindergarten in special populations for a reason. And I, I think that if we're going to leave the students that are in the school, in the school, they should be included.
Okay, so I see some of these hands raised and I, we can't take public comment. We closed public comment quite a while ago. The reason why we're talking to Maggie and Megan is because we're talking about our COVID Response Team and our Board of Health. So that is why we're taking feedback from them. Okay, so do we have more discussion? Are we ready for our separate votes?
Can, can we remind ourselves of the, the difference in numbers real quick? Just if we did sort of, again, with absolute respect to the special needs of the kindergartners. I'm reminded of the resource that was shared recently, sort of looking at the. sort of looking at the percentage of risk based off of the number of folks that you have involved in a situation and how drastically it changes when you look at 10 versus, say, 40 people. And I I think, and I'd like some clarification, that if we were looking just at special populations, it would be um a significantly lower number.
Correct.
Could somebody weigh in on that?
Sarah is on the call, she could probably tell you specifically.
So I just quickly looked. Um, I think there's about, I think there's 25 students coming into our specialized programs. Um, I don't know how many kindergartners there are, but we have preschool, RISE, SOAR, LEAP, DLC, AAM, and BEST, so across seven, well, DLC and SOAR are not in, so across five programs, um, there are, there are, I don't know, 15, 15 to 16. And then if we added SOAR and RISE in, um, that would give us an additional five, um, nine, nine students. So around 25.
And if I remember correctly, we have roughly half of our kindergartners, maybe a little bit more than that, who had returned to hybrid learning.
Um, I think Jill was on this call, Dr. Pasquini, Torquay. She might have the a better kindergarten guess. I think there's about 60, I think there's about 60 to 70 students.
Right, so my point is being at that point, we're essentially tripling the number of students that we have um when we take the kindergartners into account. Um, and I just sort of wanted to put that idea out there, and I guess I'm hearing from my colleagues, um, really Shannon, that um that's not an inter, uh, idea of interest. I'm not saying I'm, I'm not sure my own position on it, I'm just sort of putting it out there.
I mean, I'm open to discussion regarding it. I I'm just saying that, you know, they were kind of grouped in in there for a reason.
Yeah.
And
Sorry, Shannon. I was just want to say, we also have about 15 EL students and um uh, six or seven kids in a learning center, and then two other learning centers that we were thinking about um bringing back as well. So additional students with EL and the high school learning center.
Megan had her hand up. Cindy?
Yep, go ahead, Megan.
I just was going to um agree that Jonathan is is spot on with his assessment of how we calculate risk. So public health and epidemiology is all about calculating and modeling associated risk, and part of that in infectious disease is counting the number of contacts. And it's not linear, it's not one plus one is two, it's exponential, particularly with this particular virus. Um, so my recommendation to the COVID response team all along has been find the the shortlist of kids who really need services, and that is where you direct your attention. And as much as, trust me, I I have a first grader, um, and, you know, a little one, I get the special, the special uh requirements of a kindergarten first grade population. An entire grade is not a special population. It's the kids who, if we do not take care of them and provide them with what they need, they're going to fall through the cracks. Those, the smaller groups we can get, the better in terms of risk and exposure.
And we started with special pops in first and added from there slowly.
Uh, special pops in kindergarten, you mean?
Right.
I would also say that, again, that, you know, yes, we're talking about 40 or so kindergartners, um, but they're also in much smaller groups than that. Those are all, those are in groups of like six to eight kids per class. So um you break those down, you are keeping kids into pretty small pods of groups. Um, and so I think it's just part of it as opposed to just thinking of it, hitting that 25 or 50 group size, there, we're not in those. We're, we're, all of these are individual classes in, you know, less than 10 uh groupings. So I think that needs to be a factor as well. I mean, unless there's a need to break it out further, I, at least I think that what I was requesting was that we go back to your original um idea of where we might have the vote, and that it's about a question of, do we keep the current students who are in the building in the building continuing until we have additional information and change our mind later? Or, uh, you know, and have that decision and have a decision about whether or not we expand that group by inviting the first grade in? And that's how I would, I think that be safest for us to make a decision, but that's just my thought.
Okay, Lori? But that is not taking into account what our epidemiologist just said, that we should have the special population that's most at risk. And I'm saying that is not necessarily the EL students, and it definitely is not the kindergarten students. Those are the students that need special support. So if we're not going to separate them out from the kindergartners, I don't know why we're separating out, separating out anyone because we're not adhering to the advice of a specialist, so.
So are we going to add the kids from SOAR and DLC back? If you take
Okay, so, so let's, let's try, can we first have a vote on whether or not we go forward with first grade? That seems like the easiest decision to start with right now. So do we have a motion to vote on whether or not we go forward or put a hold on first grade?
And you're saying just first grade, not
Just first grade right now. Can we have a, do we have a motion and a second for that? Lori? I would like to move that we do not bring back any first graces, first graders at this time. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we have any more discussion? Okay, all right, let's take a roll call vote. Lori? Lori Garcia, aye. Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mayor?
Uh, Mayor Laschel, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. Okay, so that part, at least we have made that decision. The other part, um, it seems like, I'm trying to figure out how to frame it. So um, we have kindergartners, preschoolers, ELL, special populations, which is um was really Dassie's original mandate is to make sure that we continued to provide services for special populations uh and kindergarten. So it seems like some of the discussion is, do we split that up?
We have the remote learning center, and you have OT and PT, you have evaluations.
Right, that's true, we added a few more, so um. So I guess the question is, do we hold on to the special population, which is um our neediest, and um continue with them in the building for as long as we can? And split this, the rest of the population up and have them end on Friday? Is that kind of where we're going in our mind? I'm trying to get, we've thrown out a lot of different ideas. I'm trying to get a focus on where we seem to be looking at solutions.
I mean, I might recommend, I don't, it's going to take longer to do it this way, but then it may feel like we have the cleanest vote is if we just break each of those out and make a motion and a vote on each individual group.
Aye.
And then we're not trying to lump it, and then we're not trying to make a decision about whether we feel the lump is acceptable or not. We can
I like that.
group and just vote, make a vote on that.
I like that. Shannon?
I just want to be clear, ELL, from what I understood, was part of the special population.
Yes, it's just that
I hear you guys like splitting it up, and I I didn't think that that was
Yeah.
They're in, yeah, they're, they're
They're part of that, that special population.
Okay, and are we talking SOAR and DLC who are not in the building at the moment?
Right, and they are part of, part of the special populations discussion.
That, okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was grouped in.
So it's, we're, we basically have special pops and we have kindergarten, correct? That's what we're looking at?
Well.
So I think that, you know, DLC and SOAR either, uh, they're not currently in the building right now. So are you, you can decide tonight whether they should return on Thursday or should they be remaining in remote? So if someone wants to make a recommendation about DLC and SOAR, they can.
However, I believe, I mean, we already voted for those, for that group to be started several weeks ago, and it was a logistics issue that was not able to be started. So technically, we don't need to retake that vote unless this group is deciding we want to take that vote. We'd already said they're a part of the special populations and should be invite, it should be in school, and it was just a logistics issue that that hasn't happened yet.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think that um this decision is very, is very challenging, and I think that it's, it's, this is probably harder than the first grade decision because these students have been in school and school is working well for them. But you're also talking about our most vulnerable students, and are we really thinking about keeping them in school? If you're saying that the health metrics are such that we need to be alarmed or concerned about our students in schools. So I guess it's a, it's a double-edged sword, and I don't envy the decision that you're making. You know, the, the evaluations, I agree with some of the things that have already been said. We have a way to conduct those remotely through, you know, this, this telehealth kind of model. Um, and it can be done, and it has been done in our district before. We can continue to pro, provide services to students on their IEP. So those are things that can happen. You know, the remote learning center, uh, you know, for some of our needy high school students, it's, it's really helping them. And for our special populations, you know, our youngsters and our middle schoolers, um, I'm between a rock and a hard place on this. You know, there's part of me that would like to see these students continue in school, but I'm also cognizant of the health metrics that I think we're going to meet or exceed very quickly.
Right, you're expecting us to exceed them by Friday?
Well, I'm not, you know, I'm not an epidemiologist, but I'm just taking a shot in the dark here.
Okay. Lori? So I would like to make a motion, the half of the other motion, which was, as of Friday, all special populations should end until further notice, until we can meet and discuss the safety of the students and of the teachers who need to teach these students. Do you mean special populations or all remaining students in the building? All remaining students in the building. Okay, Mayor?
Um, I, I just, as a point of order, did we ever withdraw the very first motion? I'm, I'm trying to keep track on my, my notes.
Jonathan withdrew, Jonathan withdrew his second.
Yes.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So Lori's made a motion that as of Friday, we empty the building of students based on the um recommendation of the board of hea, of health and the COVID team. Our members are rising. Do we have a second? No, sorry. I'm sorry, it's not. Okay. We closed public speak, I apologize. Do we have a second?
I'd like to defer to my colleagues who um were interested in keeping things as split as possible. Um, if we'd like to return to that.
Well, I think, I mean, I think that we do need to make a vote, and so I would second this motion uh in that it puts us to us to actually have to make a decision. I think we have to decide as a group uh and come down and make a vote and make a decision about where we stand, about whether or not we're pulling all of our students out uh based on trends and trajectories and guesses. Um, I think it's certainly an educated guess that the trend is going to continue to go higher. Uh, but it's also my opinion that we're not there yet, and so I, but I would, I will second this for us to be able to make a decision and actually have to make a vote.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All right, well, then we'll take a vote. Lori? I'm taking into consideration the science involved, aye. Maren?
Maren Goldstein, no.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, no.
Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, can you say your name?
Uh, Mayor Laschel, aye.
Thank you, Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, no.
Okay. Um, you know, I, I was really torn before, but I have to tell you, I have to listen. My eyes look at these trends, and um I see them going in a really bad direction. We've heard from Maggie, we've heard from Megan. Um, I have to take their um thoughts into consideration. Even surprisingly, Dr. Leclerc surprised me today with um changing where I know she um had hoped to go. And so taking all that in consideration, I would say Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. And so that is, um, the motion will pass to uh end on Friday. Um, kids in the building, we will look at this, I promise you. We will look at this, we will talk to the Board of Health, we will talk to the COVID team, we will look at these numbers, and we will hope that they go in the right direction. The second we can get children back into the building, we will. Um, this is really, really hard, and the school districts across the state and across the country are grappling with this. This is not an easy decision. Um, I, my heart really was hoping that we were going to go forward in baby steps all year long, and I don't like going backwards. So is there anything else that we um should be talking about? Um, one of the things that I really think that we found is that we need to have more of a reporting out from um our COVID team and our Board of Health. And I'd like to, um, and I, if I can help facilitate that, um, I would. Um, I'll talk to the mayor and see if we can kind of pull a, a reporting out every week um and send to the school committee, and then we'll have some real data um that every, like, important part has looked at. Dr. Leclerc?
Did that decision include evaluations? I'm sorry to keep nagging.
No.
Clear, okay.
No.
So am I leaving that alone right now, or is there
That's my understanding, yes.
Gotcha.
So. Does anybody want to say anything before we leave? And if not, um, I thank everybody for this um quick meeting. I'm sorry, this is not a happy meeting. Um, I really, um, I feel for everybody. We're all going through this, and my hope is that we can turn it around as quickly as possible. Um, I thank everybody who showed up. Thank you, Maggie and Megan and our team. Thank you, Dr. Leclerc, with your team, and do we have a And do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Why are we on a quiet team tonight? Excuse me?
Nothing.
Do we have a second, or do we want to stay and discuss more?
I'm just really disappointed.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we've done an incredible disservice to our students. To the small number of population there, in the high needs population, that we are now pulling them out of school at this point is a very big disservice to them. And yes, I agree with all of the information that's been given to us. I agree with all of the reasons for us to be conservative and to be careful. And I think it is a very, that we as, you know, the school committee looking to the needs of our students is making a decision, I think it's very unfortunate.
Shannon? You were starting to say something?
We're, we're talking about 40 kids who now have no school.
No, they have school, they have remote school.
They're special populations, they thrive on in-person learning.
They do.
And I, you, everybody on the screen, I think, said what we're doing, we're doing well. You know, we haven't hit that metric yet. You know what I'm saying? Like, I just, I, I feel horrible.
Okay, I, I agree with you, I feel horrible. But as Dr. Leclerc said, she's pretty sure we're going to hit that metric by Friday. So what we're doing is making a decision about two days, three days in advance of when we'd be making that decision and we'd be in the exact same position as we are, except we would have less time to quickly pull that through and give people some heads up. The reason why we decided to have a meeting tonight is it gives people a little bit of a heads up to make a decision. But there are districts, there are schools that are going through this and they're dropping and changing and closing with no notice and pulling everybody out with a phone call at nine o'clock at night. This is not a happy time for anybody.
And it wasn't just 40 students. We were combining other populations and bringing in a new group of students. SOAR and DLC, we, we were talking about the ELLs. Really, they considered that because the way Desi clumped in special populations, it made it difficult even to discern who needs to be in. I mean, this, we kept on deliberating how we were going to break up the group. We were talking about bringing in more students, Shannon.
That's why I said 40.
No, I think the 40 are the students before. Am I correct? Before SOAR?
We had 28 before we brought in.
There is like five more students. Five more.
Put it in that number.
Dr. Leclerc, are there only 28 students in the building?
Special populations.
Yes.
There are a total of more than that in the building, though. Many more.
I heard 40.
For special populations.
I know. For special populations, there are about 25 students, Sarah said. Then on top of that, but also part of the special populations umbrella, we have about 15 ELL students. Then in addition to that, we have approximately 60 to 70 kindergarten students.
Okay.
And then we have a handful, two or three, depending on who shows up in our remote learning center. Think I've got everyone, but I, I may have missed somebody.
What about pre-K?
Oh, pre-K, I'm sorry. There's, I think, four or five youngsters in pre-K.
Right, those weren't the original numbers, though, that we were different at the beginning.
Right, so we're talking about over 100 students in the building.
And I think what, I, sorry, I mean, sorry.
Okay.
I think what Maren had suggested earlier was that we vote on these as separate populations. So that way we can, as the epidemiologist suggested, really target our services at those kids that have the most critical needs. I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm feeling emotional and I try to reduce that when I enter these school committee meetings, but it's just so hard as a representative of the public to say that we're not going to provide this critical, essential public service. Well, meanwhile, people are eating in restaurants and shopping for leisure and going about their ordinary lives. Almost all of society is open. And yet we can't provide this one essential public service to the kids who need it most. And I just feel like kids have been asked to sacrifice so much. I'll stop there.
Mayor?
Yeah, I would, I would just counterpoint what Marissa said. Certainly the emotionality is there, but, but that's not the case. There are several communities across the state that have been rolled back to phase one. Pittsfield's mayor rolled back to phase one on her own. And there also have been, I've rolled back a half a step here from phase one, step two to phase one of step three. Also, the governor has rolled back the amount of people who can be together inside as well as outside. And there are other local boards of health that are putting further restriction on that eating as well as inside groups.
Oh, I hear that, there's definitely been rollbacks, but there hasn't been the full shutdown that we're experiencing at the public school level. And I think that disjunction is just so frustrating, I think, for a lot of parents to see.
I hear you.
This is the one thing that's being withheld from us more than anything else.
The restaurant on the hill is full on Friday and Saturday nights.
I, I would, I would ask what their capacity is, you know, I'm not.
No, we are definitely, we are only, yeah, it's, it's. I'm just, the tables that we have left, because there's not many, are full.
I would, I would not say that that is a smart decision, but we can control what we can control. And buttoning down the hatches right now with numbers going up, even though the, the grave sacrifice and what we're putting on our children isn't in our responsibility to make the most, you know, the most safe decisions guided by public health for those children. I feel like I'm making the right decision. I understand there is grave, you know, consequence to it and whatnot, but.
And I would also like to add, I remember meeting Megan for the first time in the COVID response team, and it was months ago. And she said, if restaurants closed and if bars closed, we could open up the schools. So that's not our decision, though, as a school committee. Our decision is to keep students, staff, and families related to them safe.
I'll just put out, I think a real challenge here is the timing of all of this. Obviously, we haven't reached quite the threshold that we were going to hold ourselves to in terms of when we decided to shut down. But unfortunately, it seems like we're going to sort of reach that threshold during this holiday season. And in that case, you know, or, or, you know, right afterwards, in which case there could be some additional grave consequences from, from that. And I certainly, there's a part of me that wishes that we could have sort of given these kids a little bit more time in school to engage with this learning. But with, with the timing, the way that it is, I feel like the action, time for action is, is now, as we've sort of heard earlier tonight.
Did anyone second the motion to end this meeting? No, I think that, that people were just feeling that this is a hard meeting and we're just not quite ready to call it.
Well, you know, this breaks my heart as an educator, and I have made no bones about that. And I will go back to something I said at the beginning of the meeting. If people do the right thing in the next couple of weeks and we can get these numbers down, we can get these kids in school. So I think it takes a village. I mean, it takes all of us doing our part to make this work. And, you know, I think as a community, we need to get that message out there. You know, I want to get kids in the building, I want teachers to be safe, I want staff to be safe, I want kids to be safe. But I can't do that if this virus is running rampant in this community. And, you know, that's, that's my struggle.
Okay, we had a motion to adjourn. I'll second it. All right, so Lori?
Lori Garcia, good night, stay well.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle? Nope, you're on mute.
Maren LaChapelle, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you in December, please stay safe, stay well, and we'll hope for better numbers. Thank you.
Bye, folks.
Good night.